It's a good sign. All right, so this is the March date meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Pritchard is the chair, staff tonight is Deb Jones. There is an opportunity to address the commission under public communications. You'll have to raise your virtual hand in order to be recognized and allowed to speak.
Okay. I call the Planning and zoning commission to meeting to order. First item is roll call. I don't see Barbara here. Do you see her, Deb, or?
No, I don't.
So much. Okay, so I'll point Kevin then to sit for Barbara. And Steve is not here, everyone else is in attendance. So first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 22nd. Is there a second?
A second.
Moving second, does anyone have any corrections? I had a couple. On page on page five at the top of the page in that first paragraph. The first line, the first complete sentence says, they will create a right flow. There's nothing that says who they is, and I think that that should be changed to the proposal will create a right flow. And then, one, two, three, four lines down. It refers to L A Z parking. I think that ought to be spelled out as to what L A Z parking is or some identification.
We'll see if we can find it.
Or or specify who they are.
Yep.
So it's obvious a year from now what it means. On page six, on section eight, two, on the first paragraph, second sentence. It starts off, he shared this application. I think he means he's stated or said this application is to allow or states something like that. And then, yeah, and then it would in the last part of that line, I think you need a two before 2020 and B. And the same problem occurs on the next whole paragraph where it says staff shared that construction. Probably want to say staff stated that construction.
Yep.
And then, right below that, there's a missing motion.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I had. Does anyone have anything else? Corrections? If not, then we'll vote on.
This chairman just just throw it out there. I don't think you need to correct it. It's just that as a convention for going back to page five, when that third paragraph, you know, you have us keyed into the L A Z. I just noticed LPR in there. And this is done by LPR. And then in parentheses, license plate.
Usually it's on the
Other way around.
Choosing backwards, but I figured somebody could figure that out. Yeah. That's what we should do with L A Z. Okay, if there are no other correction, any other corrections? All right, if there are no others, we'll vote on the motion to approve the minutes of February 22nd as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next item, public communications. We have an email from Bill Grant. Just whom everybody has read. And I did receive four letters from the town clerk reappointing four people for their expiring terms as members and alternates. I assume everybody got a copy of those.
We did.
And a correction on an email. Does he want to have any, any other commissioners have any correspondence to identify? The staff have any?
No, nothing except what's on your agenda, a female correspondent to Mr. Grant.
Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight?
No, there's no one there, no hands.
Okay. Then moving down to new business, any new applications?
No.
All referrals. Now we have our C I P review.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen as we go through it. I can see Greg Hanover, the director of public works is here, and he has the first couple of projects. So he can take you through that. Brian Hancock, the manager of I T is also here to answer questions. I expect Mark Barry at some point, right now he's attending the council meeting and he will join us when he can. So let me get my my screen up. I think this is the first project that will be is requesting funding for this year.
Right, and what I like to do is just limit the discussion to those for funding for this coming year, 2023. If anyone wants to bring anything else up as we go along, just identify it that you want to do that and we can go over that. I did have, who's ever taking minutes of this on the first page. Deb, on the very first paragraph line, you got the years wrong. Where it says for physical year 2022 to 2027 should be 2023 to 2028.
And Deb Gilat is is taking minutes, so she's got that.
Okay. Before it goes out to the council and the R T M. Might as well get it looking good. Okay, so I have the first item that is on page, page seven, town pavement management. We have requests for 850,000 funds.
So, Mr. Chair, do you want me to just give a brief description of that?
If you could just go over.
Sure. Well, good evening, everybody. Again, Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. You know, up until last year, you know, all the road paving reconstruction was done with the bond fund that was approved, I think, gosh, 12 years back now. But the council made a decision last year to put the road rehabilitation or the repaving program back into the C I P. So I'm sure you probably remember last year, we had some roads in here and again this year.
Okay. Wasn't Sandy Hollow supposed to be done last year?
Looks like Greg is having some technical difficulties.
It was frozen.
They still frozen?
Still frozen.
He looks gone. It's too tough a question, Jeff.
No, I thought that's why New London Road got repaid, got paved.
Yeah, I thought it got paved the year before, but I'm not positive. See what Greg says.
Well, does anyone have any questions for him or?
I would just love to hear his explanation, his discussion, his approach more than anything else. I don't have any on the top.
Yeah.
Is there some way to get a hold of him, Deb?
He's actually, I mean, it looks like he is trying to get back in.
Okay.
I would just like to see how this compares to what we did when it was bonded, if it's, you know, comparable, or is it increased, or you know, what what the thought process is, I guess.
Let me see if I can find last year's.
I mean, it would, I don't know, or I guess more than anything else, you know, I, you know, I guess you would take like the life of a road divided by the miles or or the other way around. And you know, we should probably be doing however much deteriorates per year, at least that much, I would think.
Yeah, it would be nice to see it on a linear basis, a linear foot basis, what the costs are and what the approach is. And as you know, running any profit and loss, it's always good to look back to years. So the forward projection is great. I'd love to see, you know, whoever asked for a couple of past years. I think it's very effective.
When we were first presented this, it was all, it was all about the condition index. It's all, it doesn't quite follow because then you do the worst roads. And then you've got some budget left over. You do ones that aren't the worst because it meets the budget. So it's always a kind of a shuffling game.
Yeah.
I think it was so, so much for you.
I know, it's just, there were several years that that we were tightening the belt and this, and it wasn't getting done. So maybe it's, we're making up for it now.
I think what actually might be helpful is that here we're looking at 2023. If we had someplace somewhere, we have an idea what 2024, 2025 and 2026 is. And just so you can compare it.
Well, that's why he's using 1,200 per year. I think that's how the bond, wasn't the bond based on an equal funding per year?
No, and that makes sense, but in terms of choosing which roads happen first, I think that's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
He uses that rating system.
Right. That condition index, however, it doesn't necessarily follow. Because, you know, there's 30 and 36 and 55 and 45 that's kind of all over the place because there's more to it than that. As Michael was saying, it might also go to how important is the road?
Yeah, I also know I'm, I'm putting a driveway into a property that I have right now. And the costs are about 25% higher than they were a year and a half ago. So with oil too, it's all oil, you know?
Yeah. We've been there before.
Yeah, oh, no doubt. It's just that we, they are, your numbers have to reflect that or the miles of road that you're going to get done are going to be 25% less if you're using the same number.
Greg is back.
I'm back, sorry about that. I've never had
Oh.
Before. All right, so there was, I think, you have the seven roads you can see here that we're doing, Huntington Road, then the smaller, some more residential type roads that, you know, some of them like Meredith Hill Road is probably the worst road in the town of the PCI 22. So those are the roads we're looking at doing this year.
I was Sandy Hollow Road deferred, wasn't that scheduled for last, last year?
Yeah, we did, we paved that last year.
Oh, it did get paid.
Yeah. Yeah, we paved the north part of Flanders Road last year. The London Road. I think there's a couple of small cul-de-sacs. We did Conrad Morgan Street up in Windy Hill.
Greg, do you want to hear from us based on each of the pages or each of the presentations?
No, we'd want to go through each page by page. So if there's a question on this, this item, then we want to bring it up now.
Okay, thanks.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
Well, what we were saying, just so you know, we were saying behind your back break was that what we were interested in knowing was we see these seven projects. And, you know, some of them are better condition index, some are worse. And maybe it become a lot clearer if we knew what the whole package was, what was coming. Typically, we don't care what's happening in 2024 and 2025, but maybe it's important to us so we see a pattern because right now we can't really see it. Certainly, butting to make sense, but then the others seem to be and Meredith Hill, obviously, but.
Yeah, but you know, like Stonecrest, Lamont and Hemlock, they're all in the same neighborhood. So you see Stonecrest is a 28, so it makes sense to go in and do them all three. I mean, the other ones are low enough to do them while you're there, just so you don't have to remobilize. You know, the reclaiming machine and all the guys, you know, it just gets the whole neighborhood done in one swoop. Then we're out of there for, you know, presumably 20, 30 years. But, you know, we are putting a program together. I mean, this is just, you know, like you said, 23, but the next five years, we do have kind of a draft put together of, you know, what roads are going to be coming up for the next five years. And, you know, it can, once we get that finalized, I can certainly share that with you guys.
You know, when you'll have that?
Probably, you know, in another month or so.
Okay.
Greg, this, this is Kevin. Does the town council ever look backwards? I mean, a typical profit and loss on the same page, you see a fiscal year 21 and 22. So it's just a comparison number, whether there's any escalation, et cetera, or percentage thereof. Do they ask you for that?
No, they, okay, they're always looking, you know, the year they're in, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
Always looking to cut.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is, let's see, is on page eight, traffic signal replacement. We have funds for upgrading.
Yeah, this is the traffic signal. The clinic road and village lane, last year we received funds for the consultant to do the design work. They've done pretty much up to semifinal design. They gave us a cost estimate. And this is the, you know, the funds requested to actually do the installation. This is, you know, the town owns four signals. This one is 30 years old. It's, you know, we have Groton Utilities under contract to do maintenance on these things. And they're telling us that it's going to be almost impossible to get replacement parts for this thing. And it really is past its useful life. So it really needs to be replaced.
Anyone have questions on this item?
Is there more to this traffic light than meets the eye? I mean, is there some special pedestrian things going on?
It'll have all the pedestrian phases. It'll have new handicap ADA ramps, new crosswalks painted at all four corners of this intersection. It's going to have all the latest, you know, video detection monitoring like we have at Crystal Lake Road and the sub base and also Briar Hill. And you see the state is going to all that now they're getting rid of the loop detectors.
Okay, so this isn't just the traffic lights.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, next is page nine, Groton Long Point Bridge Reconstruction.
Yeah, this is to replace the bridge and also rebuild the causeway going to Groton Long Point. You know, we've had a group meeting, a group, a task force put together by the council. And we've kind of come up with a plan and will be presenting to the council, I hope, if not this month, next month, you know, where we are. And so the next phase of this project is to start getting into the really the final design and permitting, which is what this funding is for. We're projecting construction will be, you know, 2025, about a couple, three years. But so this is just really for the next step in the design process, which is final design and permitting.
But it does say construction costs here.
Where does it say that?
Well, in the table below, it says construction.
Oh, it should be moved up. Good point.
Oh, is that not correct then?
That's not correct. You're right, it should be up under planning engineering.
Oh, I see. But on the other ones where you have construction, even if it's not.
Yeah, if it's construction, it should be.
It will have.
Yeah, it should be.
Well, you just may want to do that.
Yeah, yeah, that we can make that correction.
We care, but might as well have it look professional for when it goes through the people looking at the amounts. We're just supposed to look at as realistic to do it. Any other, any questions on the, on the bridge project? See, on page 10, that's nothing for 23. Page 11, reconstructing Main Street knowing of planning and engineering costs.
Yeah, this is the, you know, we've been talking about this one for a number of years and it's, I think it's been in the C I P for quite a few years, but it's always been pushed down the road. And I think it's finally time we get a consultant to start doing some you know, public outreach, start doing some preliminary concept designs for what this is really going to be not only just the reconstruction of the street, but also sidewalks, streetscape, you know, for that whole Main Street area drainage issues that we have there. And if you look at the pavement management program, this is another one that's probably like one of the worst roads in town. But we've been putting off paving, repaving it because, you know, we want to do a full reconstruction with, to include sidewalks and drainage. So this is just the first step in that process.
Anyone have any questions on that? Or comments? Okay, next is item F Norris Storington Road Bridge. Planning and engineering and construction costs for that.
Yeah, this is to replace the bridge. It's been out for a number of years now. But I believe the town manager is actually was gonna, he wants to leave it in here, but he's going to zero it out, let the council decide if they want to fund it or not. Because from what I understand, Stonington is not going to fund it this year, but this is, let's leave that to the politicians to decide what they're going to do. I mean, the bridge needs to be replaced, but I'll just leave it at that.
We'll never get done. No. Page 13, there's no funds in there for 2023. Page 16, Groton Long Point Pavement Management Program. This is, I assume is similar to the towns.
Yeah, they, they decide what roads they want to do. We give them the cost estimates and we actually contract out, you know, they hire us to do the work. I think they had three roads here.
So anyone have any questions or comments on that item?
Yeah.
Okay, and then moving on to page 18, Culvert Rehabilitation.
Thank you, sir. This is for the Quaker Farm Road Culvert, which is currently out of service and that road is closed. We have a consultant that's doing the design and permitting right now. And we're actually going to replace the two, they're five foot metal arch culverts with actually a concrete span or a bridge to replace the culverts. Mostly for wetlands and environmental reasons, also reduce the chance of the beavers creating dams here, which they seem to like to do at that location. So this is the money for the construction.
Next. I'll go into next year, just as a question on the repair, installation or repair of the bridge on River Road. Is that road need to be raised to have this done or?
Um, I mean, we'll certainly.
Hotter at high tide.
Yeah, this is right at Binless Road there, and I'm not sure if that area actually, I mean, I've never been down and seen that road. It's a little higher there. I know there are areas that do go underwater and I don't know, maybe see what our resiliency study says.
No, I was just wondering whether it makes sense to.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we'll be looking at those things.
It does get done, okay. Okay, page 19, local drainage improvements.
This is another one where we've got roads that go underwater down in West Mystic Willow Point area.
West Mystic, is that Willow Point you're talking?
Willow Point, yes. Yeah, once you go over the railroad tracks, I guess.
But if you look at different maps, they show it different places.
Different places, yeah.
Now, but the, the write-up implies that sea, sea level causes the flooding and not drainage. Is it really drainage or sea water?
It's a combination. Some of the outlets are under water at high tide or even at mean tide. So it's, you know, when it rains, it's really nowhere for the water to go sometimes. It just stays in the road till the tide goes back out, then it drains out.
Yeah, but if, if that's what it is, there's nothing you can do with it if it's.
No, no, short of putting in a huge pumping station or something.
No, you're not doing that.
We're not going to do that, no, that would cost a fortune.
No, that's what my point was, that if it's.
Where would you pump it?
You'd have to build a retention pot somewhere.
Yeah, build a dike around it, be like Holland.
So why aren't we just putting in there to raise the road? Doesn't need to be raised very much. Suck four feet of water there, it's just floods.
It's, yeah, there's a foot of water or more down at some ends of it. So it's, and it's super flat. So it's, you know, it's a combination of regrading and drainage.
Okay, well.
Well, too, when you do that, you're, you're talking about then everyone's driveway is going to be a hollow.
Yeah. So give everybody a Zodiac to get an out of there. All right, any question, other questions on that item? Okay, page 20, there's nothing for next year. Mystic Streetscape on 22, page 22, that's no funds for 23. Next one we have was ones on 23 is replacement sidewalk construction. Page 23.
Yeah, this is, you know, we've been, we have a contractor now that's done some of the work. So we just, every year, we're just going to be putting out more and more
Same amount of funding.
Same amount of funding to replace broken sidewalks also. There's companies out there that'll come in and saw cut and grind down if we have, you know, trip hazards, you know, like the, a heat panel that's, you know, created a one inch lip or something. They'll come in and just, you know, cut down the concretes or going to be doing some of that. But this is just to, you know, make, to remove all the trip hazards and broken, deteriorated concrete sidewalks we have in town.
So anyone have any questions or concerns on that? Not page 24, infill sidewalk construction. This is flat funding.
Yeah, just to do, we have, we're in the design now for some sidewalks on Route One from 117 to towards Johnson's Hardware. And then we cut some up. I think there's some areas up by Route 12 or Route 1 that need some sidewalks. So this is just an infill. You know, just make sure we have a connection all the way through our commercial areas, start there and then branch out to some other areas.
Can we scroll up so that I can see those addresses again, please? There you go, thank you.
I think last year we looked at this and most of it seemed fine, but except for the Fishtown Road. This River Magnet School, I think the consensus was, it wasn't really going to have to talk about it much because it wasn't going to happen. But the discussion was pretty much that that should be unbelievably rock bottom compared to everything else. I mean, which one's important? And that's probably the least important because it's a terrible connection by bicycle or by walking all the way down the hill. It's just, there's nothing in between to speak of. And it's the most vastly, the most expensive, so.
Yeah, certainly.
We like to put off doing, if there's an order to this at all, I think that one should be, you know, wait on an out year someplace when everybody has electric bikes and then, then maybe we'll take another look at it.
As you see more people walking along Allen Street than.
Yeah, absolutely. There's always somebody walking along the Allen Street. It's probably a road south of the Magnet School.
Yeah, these, these aren't in any particular order. And I agree with you, Hal, that Fishtown is probably never going to get done.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't like seeing it in the mix because the other things we'd like to do.
Yeah.
Adds to this great big number. And so.
It'd be nice if someone prioritized them by number, right? Because we always do that in capital.
Yeah.
Maybe a little sensitive to some people, but I think as a group it'd be nice to prioritize.
I think that's valid.
Well, the list now isn't. An alphabetical or anything else, so I, I think that the way the list is written. You could just shuffle the list around and no one would know what we did.
Well, so, yeah.
Well, whatever.
Well, would that make sense, Greg, to try to put it in order, the list?
Yeah, we can, we can try to prioritize. Yeah, and it may even drop that one off there. I mean, the only reason it was on there because it was in the, the Brian Kent study from ten years ago or five years ago, whatever it was.
Yeah, and honestly, as, as I, you know, a pseudo bike lane kind of thing that might start to make sense at some point. But it's right now, it, it compared to these other needs, it, it's not. I'm looking at Allen Street. Whitehall Lane to Edgecombe Street. That's kind of low hanging fruit on a great little piece that's missing and a good one to do.
Yeah.
I have it on, on this, it looks like it's below the one that we can't imagine doing. So I would shuffle these into something that makes sense.
But these costs, costs are more than what you can get done in a year, most of them.
Yeah, some of them it would be, you know, over a couple of years.
Or special or separate funding or separate.
Separate funding, yeah.
I mean, if it's really necessary.
So Greg, do you sometimes do a partial, like on, say, Plaquonic Plains Park? Would you do a quarter of it this year and then a quarter next year? Is that how it works at times?
At times it does, yeah. Like, you know, like the, the top ones is Route One, four hundred thousand dollars. Well, you know, we do half this year, half next year, maybe, or. Over three years. You know, and like Grotten Long Point Road, Brook Street, Escapoint Beach, you know, that's. One that I'd like to see get done because that's, you know, you see a lot of people walking along the, it's, it's all gravel there now and it's. You know, so a lot of people do use it. And Allen Street as well.
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
Maybe you have to go to the council and get them sep- separately authorized. Because there's safety issue, really.
Yep.
Any other comments on? On that? So perhaps we should make a comment on.
Yeah, if you want to comment and, you know. Put some thought together to prioritization, that would be helpful.
We need to make some comment about this also kind of connecting with a complete street idea. That we're talking about adding. Multi-purpose lanes and, okay, well, should it be, should there actually be a bike lane? It's one of those things that we're supposed to be thinking about and building in. And not just putting in a new sidewalk that's four or five feet wide.
Oh, you're right.
Is there a plan for something like that?
I don't think so.
We've talked about it, but was that?
Well, maybe it's something that we could just like, you know, forward with, we're gonna have comments that are going to the town council.
I think we should do that, yeah. Is that?
Put it on the radar.
Is that part of the Trails Master Plan, Doug?
Yeah, Mark Berry has applied for a grant to update that and include complete streets. Along with it, and I think the council is looking to forming a task force to look at a complete street policy.
Yeah, I mean, there is a statement in the CIP narrative, the last sentence too, about looking at, you know. Multi-use paths as well, not just traditional. Five-foot sidewalks.
Maybe we could just make a comment.
Should make a comment. Yeah, we should make a comment on that. Okay, the next item I have is page twenty-six, facilities, oops, parks and recreation, so we can't do those.
Mark Berry shouldn't be on in about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, we'll bypass. We have anything else for Greg or is that? Well, he does the last very last ones.
And he does.
I got the public. Yeah, do Sam's next if he's still here.
He is. All right, so let's do the schools.
Okay. So we'll go shift to schools.
That's section five.
Thirty, page thirty. Six is the first item I have. Fitch High School Athletic Fields.
There we go, and Sam is on. Good.
Bam, good evening.
Do you want to just briefly go over?
Yeah, so the Fitch High School Football Field, the. Field itself has lost its crown and doesn't drain very well. Uh, people are concerned about that. But I have some hesitation there because there is a field committee. That has expressed interest in doing a, an artificial turf field at Fitch High School. On the football field, so maybe Deb knows more about where we stand with that. But I, I don't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars and then find out that. It's gonna, then we're gonna do a two million dollar new field too, so. I, I leave it in your hands as to determine what we do with this one for now.
Yeah, I, I don't have any information on this. The Parks and Rec Department, I think, serves on that committee. So I, I don't have any information on it.
So i- if we did do the. Sod, a sodded field, re-crown it and do sod. Uh, we would also do irrigation at the same time if it were a grass field so that we could maintain it in, in a higher state. Uh, would also reduce the amount of water that we put on the field. It'd be more efficient and effective for sure.
Tim, do you know when the last time on that field was crowned?
I haven't been able to find it in the record, so it was quite some time ago.
Yeah, because it is a significant, you know, dollar amount, but. That, that to me would mean ten plus years, most likely, if you can't find it.
It was longer than that, but.
Oh, boy, okay.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Page thirty-seven, Charles Barnum Roof Replacement.
Yeah, Charles Barnum Roof Replacement is on here again. Last year. The town manager asked if we could get through another year and bring it back this year, which we did. Uh, it's a million dollar project. It, it, again, depend upon what the funding looks like. We have been able to maintain the roof by doing some minor patchwork. It is beyond its lifespan, beyond the twenty years. But, uh, a- again, we could stretch it out another year if we had to, but we definitely wanted to at least bring it back and have it under consideration.
Anyone have any questions on that item? Okay, next item. Page thirty-nine, Fitch High and Barnum Schools HVAC. Upgrades.
Yeah, so th- this is a quote from Fussin' O'Neill Engineering. To do a, an HVAC study in the, what we call the vintage area of Fitch High School, which is the oldest portion of the school. Uh, and also for the Charles Barnum School. Uh, at the same time. So that would, and after. What has now been, I'm trying to remember, it's been about three years of COVID, I don't know. Or going into our third year, who knows? But everybody recognizes that indoor equality is, is of a, a high priority today. And those, those areas of those two schools could certainly use some upgrade. And this study would, would tell us exactly what we need, so that's why there is no. A number for construction the following year or the year after, until we find, until we get this study done.
Is it really a study or people going in and making a proposal?
They, they're, they're going to, uh, no, it won't be a proposal in a sense that they're gonna do the work, but they are gonna do the study and, and. Estimate the cost of it, yes.
Yeah, but they're, it's, they're not studying it, they're gonna come up and say, you need to put in a unit of a certain size and a certain.
That's correct, yeah.
That's not a study.
Their design work?
Yes. So that's study and design is what you're thinking of, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm, I, because I think we already know that it needs it.
Yeah.
Right.
Any concerns with that item? Let's see, page forty, Fitch High School Culinary Arts.
Okay, so there's a movement in education now to, for work-ready programs. And the culinary department at Fitch High School is, is making a proposal to. Uh, in, increase the, it's, it's an extremely popular program at the high school, they probably turn. Uh, over a hundred kids a year from the program presently, so they would like to upgrade the equipment to more. Restaurant-level equipment and. And, and so doing adds some space for additional students at the same time. All within the confines of the footprint of the building. Might be eliminating some closets, things like that.
Anyone have any questions on this item?
Yeah, a big one for what? Do we have any cooperation? I thought there was supposed to be some cooperation between Grasso Tech and Fitch. Is that?
We, yeah. So Superintendent Austin and I met with the principal of the Technical School. Uh, months ago, I don't really, maybe six or eight months ago. Uh, and they, there's a new program with the technical schools where they. Are, are allowing, uh, schools that are but their property to take after-school classes in certain areas. And so it hasn't been determined exactly what programs are gonna offer. At Southeastern Tech or Grasso Tech presently. Uh, but that program will be starting up soon, so that's the first step in that. We're trying, Susan, uh, Dr., Susan Austin and I, the superintendent, Austin and I are working with the. Uh, Grasso Tech Administration. Uh, they just requested to use one of our fields because they don't have a field for one of their teams this spring, so. We are cooperating with them, fitting them in here in hopes that maybe we can work, work a deal with them too. That would be the other thing that I didn't, I didn't think of mentioning when we were talking about the football field, but. I've, I've always said that if the Giants and the Jets can share a football field. Why couldn't Fitch and Grasso Tech share that brand-new football field down there? They could come up and practice on our grass field when they're practicing and we could go down there and play our games on alternate dates from them. So that's, uh, we haven't got to that, broached that subject with it, with the superintendent of, of the technical schools yet, but it's on our. List to discuss.
Okay, because, because one of the, the fantastic things that we now have accomplished was to have this campus. Where we've got the middle school and, and the high school and the technical school all within. A, a few minutes walk of each other.
Right.
The, the pedestrian access isn't all it could be to Grasso, but it should be. It should be, should restore whatever is that would allow students to get back and forth rather than having them sort of sneak around and do it. But so the idea that Grasso Tech, I noticed that Grasso Tech has a music program, which makes me crazy. Why would they bother having a music program when they could just kind of. Dovetail into Fitch's, they don't really need much, they've got a half dozen people who want to play an instrument, send them up to Fitch. You just mentioned that the sharing the fields makes perfect sense, of course it makes sense. And, but the idea of spending. Doing a whole bunch of construction. For a culinary program when Grasso Tech has a specific culinary program. With two chefs, chefs on board. What, this, this sounds like absolute duplication and not doing it as well, because we won't have chefs. We'll have, I don't know what we'll have. So in terms of.
One of the problems with. Uh, students going back and forth from school to school during a school day is that the schedules don't, don't match up very well, so. I, I'm sure that there's probably something somebody could figure out at some point, but, uh, right now, the, the schedules don't work though. Uh, they don't coincide, so that, that seems to be the biggest impediment to doing that for. Either bringing music students up there or sending culinary students down there or whatever else might come up.
Well, to have, to have duplicate programs that really don't. And having one being secondary, not as good as the other. Because you can't figure out the scheduling, that, that seems absurd to me.
Yeah, I agree with Hal a hundred percent on that one, that was one of my questions, and I thought that the Grassa was supposed to be focusing on. Career readiness type things, meaning different sorts of careers maybe than Fitch. Uh, would be emphasizing, but I don't understand why now we're gonna be duplicating both schools, especially because they're next door to each other. And all, I mean, I think Hal's made the good points on this one.
Yep, uh, you, you, you know that the high school and the middle school are now international baccalaureate programs and. And part of the international baccalaureate is to have a career-ready, uh, uh, work, this, uh, school-to-work programs as part of their program, so.
Are, are you telling me that IB program is going to be emphasizing cooking and culinary art? I find that hard to believe.
No, I, I don't know the details of it, but I do know that some of that is required as part of their program, yes.
I, I kind of think, well, maybe that's venturing off topic because I doubt that they're having that kind of vocational emphasis on an IB program. I mean, my daughter went through that program at Fitch, so I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with it, but. That's just, um, then again, you're really getting into the duplication thing.
Oh, we should probably make, make a comment on this, so that.
Well, what is, what is fiscal year twenty-three, though, the planning and engineering? It would seem if it's a really highly engaged program, and by the way, Fitch just came in third in the state of Connecticut. Ability to look at what we're talking about. And I presume through the planning and engineering is good for this year, but for twenty twenty-four, we could say. It seems like there's a lot of, um, um, questions about that, right?
Well, it seems, I, I agree that, that doing the planning engineering makes perfect sense, however, the planning engineering shouldn't be. Based on. Here's what we want to build at Fitch. Planning and engineering should also just be part of the study of how can we make this work? One of the options that we should come up with. Rather than just build stuff at Fitch is. Classroom sharing, schedule sharing. That sort of thing between Grasso Tech and Fitch. That's one of the solutions to this.
Yeah, rather than get the camel's nose under the tent.
Yeah, I, I see that Mr. Fiftle got the email regarding our culinary students going to Hartford against the Crick. And Hartford Schools, all those schools up there, including the technical schools. And those culinary students from Fitch did come in third in last week's contest, so. It, it's not a, it's not a weak program, it's not, uh, I, I. You know, years ago, we used to have a homemaking classes, so it's not anything like that. It's not Betty Crocker-type stuff, it's actually a much more robust program like that.
Okay, um, having said that, it'd be nice to have a Betty Crocker thing, because I think. I would love it if our kids knew how to cook, but. If this is in direct competition with, with Grasso, it, it shouldn't be. It should be the same.
But maybe it's not in direct competition, maybe it's just in addition to, you know, a state school trying to get a program together. You know, my friend is a principal up at LS Tech, and they didn't do any of that, he said, because it was almost impossible to cross those roads on so many different ways. Right? It, it makes sense, no one argues that point, but maybe it's an addition, maybe it's an additional hundred people. Hundred kids that actually we give jobs to when they come out. Yeah, they don't want to go to Grasso Tech, but it's an integral part of Fitch, just like IB, culinary.
Well, Grasso, part of Grasso's program is how to run a restaurant. And how to work at a restaurant, and is those direct kind of. Basic, basic employable things. That's exactly kind of what we're talking about, so maybe it isn't the highest cooking standards, because then you still have to go to a, a cooking school after that. But, and that's what. They're actually learning how to get a job, which is what we're talking about. So maybe there is actually another course that you could take at Fitch that's another level up. And you go down to Grasso Tech to get the brass tacks and. And you go down to Grasso Tech to get the brass tacks and learn how to, I don't know, get the great texture out of your flambe. I don't know what you do down there. But there's things you need to do and neat things you learn to do and how to serve your customers. And Fitch is probably not doing that. It's probably stressing more the actual higher end of the cooking part. So I think that the two things should match up, should dovetail, not just overlap each other wildly because we can't figure out how to schedule it.
So why doesn't our comment be, we agree with the planning and engineering. We have some concerns for twenty twenty-four as far as that dollar figure is concerned. Ian would love to see that the programs match up prior to construction and equipment, um, something like that.
Well, I'd actually like the matching up in the planning and engineering stage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you spending on?
Yeah, the time to figure out how to match it up is in the planning and engineering.
That's right.
That's our day. Our comments would be fairly general, I think, just say that we oughta, that's oughta try to integrate two programs.
Exactly.
You're not getting, not get into a lot of details.
That's right.
That's seventy thousand dollars is an actual estimate from a SLAM cooperative, which is the uh uh architect, which also did the uh Groton Middle School. So uh that is the actual estimate that they've given us or quote that they've given us to.
We're not, we're not really looking at the dollars. It's just.
The effort.
The effort, yeah. Whether it's realistic.
And Hal, I don't think they're doing flambe in schools. I'm just telling you. Not gonna need fire. I mean, only other comment for twenty.
You do a good flambe nowadays.
As a certified chef, Sam, I will take that six hundred thousand dollars, but I can give you twenty hours for that.
I'm from the other side of her tracks. I don't even know what a flambe is, so.
You're making me hungry.
Oh, are there any other school projects or is this?
Is it?
Yep, that's it.
Yeah. So I just can't. So if we have none of those, we.
Okay, so I'm all set then. Uh, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks a lot. Good night.
Is Mark Berry available, Deb, or?
Uh, not yet, um, but the next um section is facilities, so Greg can probably go over some of the.
We have public buildings. All right, yeah. So we go back to Greg on public bu- buildings. First one is Senior Center. Replace the signage. Is that really necessary?
Or to Mark Berry it is.
Why?
They wanted to, they're rebranding to Thrive Fifty-Five, which I still, I still call.
Thrive, now it's not.
It's not a kind of orange.
It's not.
He can defend the CIP cuz I just put the numbers in there.
Yeah, but I don't, I, why do we wanna waste our money? I'd rather have this a sidewalk built rather than changing the sign, and everybody knows what a senior center is. A thrive, i- i- it's not appropriate use of the English language. It's a verb, not a noun. Hmm, so it oughta go under education and educate people. But seriously, I I tell me this is a waste of money.
Yep, I agree.
And it also shows that people don't, don't learn the basics in education.
The 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 goal was, when you see senior center, you expect people with 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 walkers to be moving in. You want people who are hunched over and old, and that's what you think of when you think senior center, except for us since we're there now. And we use.
It's really an acti- it's really an activity center.
It kind of is. So how do you, and so I I'm sure that's what they were going for. If they put the the word fifty-five in there, then maybe they could grab some people who are only fifty-six, which you heard a whole lot going to a senior center now. But but I agree the the term thr- thrive fifty-five because of some focus group that's spending money doing it.
Doesn't describe the building, the use of that building.
No.
No, that's what I had.
In great big letters.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I I I I wouldn't know, you know, you would drive by, you wouldn't even know what that was.
Yeah, nobody.
Sorry, I mean, you know, it, what we should really have in this world is a community center. That's what it should be. Shouldn't just be for the, you know, people over fifty-five. Anyone should be able to use these things. But that's that's another conversation for another day.
Yep.
I agree. I mean, why don't we start putting outside our schools, like elementary school, Thrive Six? Or. It doesn't make any sense. That's not the use of the building.
Thrive Six through Nine.
Very good, Kevin.
Every once in a while.
Make sure that's in the meeting minutes.
Bingo.
So I just wanna note with this, this this project is not just designed, it's also carpeting and and things inside the building.
The carpeting, I have no problems with what it's for naming.
Oh, I did. I found something a little funny about that because that's removing the carpet in the music room, so is it no longer going to be a music room?
That's correct. I think they're gonna use it for dance programs.
Okay.
There's no music program.
All right, so they're not, cuz you can't do music on a hard floor.
So Mark Berry has just joined us. Um, Mark, we're. We're, we're on.
Yeah.
Timing is great.
Yeah, thanks. I don't think so. Okay, so fill me, what's the discussion?
Senior Center, page.
Well, we're, you know, we've got the two projects up here, Mark, for the senior center. One is for the uh replacing the um carpet in the music room with VCT or the vinyl tile, and then the other one is the replace the signage um from Groton Senior Center to Thrive Fifty-Five. So if you wanna, there, a lot of discussion going on, so maybe if you wanna fill in everybody.
Okay.
More detail.
Sure, so the request to change the flooring i- in the music room is uh by changing the flooring, it allows us uh provides more multipurpose space, uh particularly uh it allows us to offer more um exercise classes. Uh, right now, we really only have one space, and having an additional site that we can uh have exercise classes in uh increases our ability to serve the community. So that's why we've uh asked for that. It was actually, I think in last year's um operating budget, but due to COVID and the impact that that's had on our revenue in the special revenue fund, uh, w- we weren't able to complete that project, so we've uh moved it into a CIP. Uh, and it was approved last year as part of our operating budget. But we, like, again, we weren't able to do it because we had to uh move, um, cuz we didn't have the revenue. The question was on that one was, so are are, is it no longer gonna be a music room? No, I think it would still get used as a music room, but right now with a carpeted floor, we can't use it as an exercise space. Well, you, I think if you take out the ti- if it's just tile floor and hard walls, it'll be horrible to use as a music room, and will also be horrible for every place else. So if you're gonna move hard walls, then you need to do something else to fix the acoustics, which could be no more than a heavy curtain that you can spread out or not on the inside wall. It doesn't need to be in the outside wall, but you need something else to make up for that absorption, or it will be horrible. We'll be doing something else in the next year, trying to put extra ceiling tiles or something up because it'll be unthinkable in. Yeah. Okay, when they do it, what you're doing in a, in an actual music space, one of the things where you wanna switch it over from speaking to the music performance, and the curtain thing, I didn't just invent that. That's actually a thing to do, heavy, very heavy curtains. You know, you open up the curtain so that there's, you're looking at bare wall. Now it's a nice hard space and everybody can hear great. You close it up and now you've deadened the space so you can play your horns without making everybody deaf. So that that needs to be part of the same project.
It'd be the.
It isn't cheap cuz it's heavy, heavy curtain. Sure. All right. And the signage we were all making fun of. Oh, okay.
We don't wanna, we don't really wanna do that, do we?
Make fun of it or change?
One of it because it's not a logical change.
Well, uh, the the research that we did, um, you know, the results were uh don't align with your thinking. Uh, we did a a barriers and perception study and uh found that people were not coming to the senior center because it was called the senior center. And n- nobody likes to think they're a senior. Uh, you know, I'll I'll be sixty-one uh in in July, and I certainly don't consider myself a senior. Uh, although I I'm, I I do, I have signed up and I do use the uh exercise room, uh, the fitness center there. Uh, but there are people that don't go there for that reason. So we went through a a pretty um intensive study and uh came up with the the name Thrive Fifty-Five, and uh, you know, we, they have started rebranding in a lot of different areas, and and one of the areas that we also need to look at is the exterior of the building. You know. They asked that you don't throw away the old letters. Because I would think, I would think that if you just called it the Adult Activity Center or something like that to to differentiate it from the Community Center, which unfortunately isn't the same thing as, as Michael mentioned. It should be one thing. That's not what we have. Oh, well. But we're just wanna get adults into this place. We don't want kids there, so it's adults into the place. Right. Just, you know, octogenarians, but so I get that, but we're thinking that the Thrive Fifty-Five is this gosh, golly, whiz-bang advertising appeal that won't hold true because it also doesn't tell you what's going on inside the building. Well, e- either does the Groton Senior Center. What does that tell, what does that tell you? Oh, I agree. I I think maybe it does need to be changed.
Call it an activity center then.
This is or a senior activity center, if that's fine, but to come up with a brand name that tells you neither, then that's that's what we had a problem with. They were branding that says not, nothing about it. What does Thrive Fifty-Five mean? Sounds like it it could be a company.
Hmm.
Well, I I can tell you we're we're not going through this exercise again to to change the name cuz we uh we had focus groups with uh participants and users of the facility and non-users. And this is uh the direction that we got from them. So we're we're not going back and doing a rebranding exercise and and starting to change the name of the facility again.
Well, why don't you just leave it as it is on this?
Well, that's the one thing they don't wanna do, but what, will we be able to, just wanna know, they're gonna rebrand everything. And like any other project, if you're gonna paint the place blue or put in carpeting or or put in new materials or bring in new people, you'd always wanna know how, how how good was this project, like any other project? So here we're gonna put a new name on there, Thrive Fifty-Five. Just wanna be able to track how many more people younger did it actually bring in? Will we be able to actually track that, or is that gonna be kind of disappeared? Oh, no, that that will be, that will be easy to do, and and actually, the the department's going through agency accreditation. And one of the standards that we uh need to meet i- is we need to annually conduct research projects. And and we've already identified this as a, as a research project. So we can go back and look at the demographics prior to changing the name and look at the demographics through program registration, uh, you know, after the change and uh look at the difference. And so we intend to do that. Okay. All right.
Well, I just say I'm gonna, I uh, I hope it works, but uh, my experience in my life is always, I refer to everything to what it was thirty years ago. So I I'll probably continue to call it the senior center. And my experience so far, anyone who's mentioned it kinda says Thrive Fifty-Five, and then it's like a joke. So I I hope, though, that it it isn't a joke, but it that it works, but it seems like, seems like an exercise in doing something that, I don't know what, maybe it's Thrive Fifty-Five at the senior center, but.
But our point is, our point is a little different. So while we may not believe in in um the rebranding, our opposition is, okay, if you choose to rebrand, fine, ten thousand dollars to rebrand a particular piece of signage seems to me excessive. That's my point.
I mean, dealt with this, that I know that that kind of individual letter signage is outrageously expensive and a real pain to install. So that's where the numbers come from.
Don't put, get rid of the numbers, throw them away.
Yeah, cuz that's not our business, so.
Any other comments on that?
Yeah.
So we go, well, might as well finish up on this section. We got waste decant facility. That's not, no, it's town hall complex.
Uh, this is um for the uh Groton Community Center. Speaking of the community center, um, we have a couple of projects proposed here. Uh, the first is um the eight hundred thousand for um the boiler replacement. Um, we've got two boilers that are from nineteen seventy-eight in the building. One of them is out of service um due to extensive repairs that are needed. So we uh have an engineer right now doing the design work, which was approved last year to replace these boilers uh to natural gas units. Um, so that's what that construction money's for, eight hundred thousand. And also at the community center, we're looking at um hiring an architect to start doing some preliminary plans and cost estimates for um moving uh some parks or X programs and also some town office space, particularly like the judge of probate um, uh, parks uh and recreation from the Spicer House over to here uh into the A Wing. And the A Wing is a two-story, you know, the original high school two-story that you see from Route One. So we've got some money in there to uh s- start that study, come up with some uh real plans and uh cost estimates for bringing those town departments over there. And then the last thing is, we do have some money uh for the town clerk's office in the town hall to replace um some old worn-out carpet with some vinyl plank flooring.
Anyone have any concerns or questions on this item?
I, it's fine to do all these things. I just, what I'd like to see on here is, we were talking, just talking about signage. And among the things that this, as a community center is still missing is a way to identify it as not just an old building. You know, it just says what, it just says Fitch on the side in great big letters right now, right? Does it, it's a Fitch.
It does on the front there. Um, there is a sign on the main, well, we, what is now the main entrance, which is kind of towards the middle of the building in the back.
But yeah.
Um, but we are gonna be putting one of those town standard freestanding signs out at the road, say Groton Community Center. Um, so that'll help a little bit.
Help a little bit. You need to get them back to, you know, you, what you did is you put a kind of a weather vestibule on the, on a fire exit back there in the corner. But it's not, it it still doesn't have an entrance, so.
Right, right.
No.
That'll be part of this plan, yes.
Okay, well, I don't see it, I don't see that described in this, so I'm just. So uh, Hal, one of the other things that we're doing is we're working on, um, we're currently putting together an RFP to create a mural that.
that, um, would actually go on the three walls right by the vestibule. Um, and so it would be bright, attractive and identify that space as the Grotton Community Center.
Murals.
Yep.
Mural is that if you want, if you want to, to show off a front door, then you make a big fuss about the front door and not just have signs and arrows saying this is the front door. So I think mural, mural sounds pretty good, but it doesn't get you from the street back there too well. I mean, there's, there's no canopy back there. There's kind of nothing. I think, actually a canopy would probably go all the long way, a fabric one. Something that physically tells you and not just signage tells you, this is the entrance to this place. Because once you get in there, you're still just standing in a hallway, right? There's, there's no reception there. You're just, you have to turn left or turn right to get to anything.
Right. And, and that's actually one of the departments, uh, the department has expressed the concern with the fact that that's a, depending on the section of the building you're in, a sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety year old building that was not built and designed to be a community center. It, it was a school and the school said, look, it no longer meets our needs. It's dilapidated. Here we'll give it back to the town and the town turns around and says, here we'll give it to Parks and Recreation. So, uh, it, yeah, uh, you know, is it an ideal situation? Certainly not. We've tried to address some of those concerns through, uh, different conversations with different folks. Uh, right now it appears that there really isn't any interest in, um, taking a big picture view of, of that building and we're going to continue to put Band-Aids on, uh, different parts of that building. So, um,
Is this, is this space utilization study just very limited then?
Well, it's, it's mainly concerned with the A Wing.
Oh, so it's just the A Wing. Well, even then. I would say that would be, that's the kind of thing where I think that might be fine if in fact the architect is given free rein to figure out what would be best there. You know, there's always two ways to use an architect. One is to tell them what to do and one is to ask them what to do. You get a better product for the second one.
Yep.
And so if we, you don't just tell them, this is all you can look at, then I'm fine with this.
I should, should we be making a comment that an overall plan should be developed for the use of this building?
That was the comment that you made last year.
So we'll repeat it.
I think so.
All caps.
Yeah, not just the A Wing. I mean, it won't take much more. Same, it might take another, you know, a, a little bit extra added to the fee, but it'll be money well spent.
Yeah, it will. Well, it's a use either you, you develop a good use for the building, it turns on. But it's a good location, so.
Good location. Should be a master plan someplace in there.
Yeah. Any other comments on that item? Next one is, uh, Grotton Public Library. Funds for twenty-three.
Um, again, there's a few different projects here. Um, one is we had last year gotten funds for replacing the cooling tower, which is in poor condition. Um, we went out to bid with that. Unfortunately, just like everything else, the costs are just coming in way above what we had for estimates the previous year. So we're just asking for some additional funds, uh, to add to last year's approved fund so we can get that replaced, that cooling tower replaced. Um, the second one is funds to replace the original nineteen seventy-seven windows that are, you know, along the, um, south and, and eastern side of the building, where the burns are. And we're also, um, the oil tanks, this is an oil fired boilers in the building, uh, the oil tank is reaching the end of its useful life, uh, which is uh, thirty years. And so we're looking at, you know, doing some design work to convert to natural gas because we do have gas available in the street.
That's a good idea. Any questions or concerns on this item? The next one is.
Greg, can I ask a question on that one?
Yeah.
Uh, what, what is the life of a gas boiler?
Um, well, it's not so much the boiler itself. I mean, because it's the tank that we're going to replace. I mean, uh, but a gas.
We're not replacing the oil tank, are we?
No, no, we're taking the oil tank out and we're putting in a, a, and we'll replace the boiler as well and put in a natural gas burning boiler and bring in the service, um, you know, from ever source from Route one seventeen. Uh, which, just like the senior center has gas boilers.
I guess where I'm going is, I, I mean, the life of a gas, we're, we're talking twenty fifty or, or, or so with this gas boiler and, and should we be thinking of the next generation of heating buildings? Next, you know? What's coming after this?
Yeah, um, you know, we, we always, you know.
I mean, heat pumps.
Yeah, we talked to the engineers where I say, you know, what is the best, you know, solution to do? And they're always say, oh, it's, you know, to convert to gas. And we do have heat pumps in this building, um. But, you know, that, that's always been the, uh, the recommendation we've always been getting, just to, you know, to convert to gas when we can.
Not what I'm doing with my properties, but.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, I, it does, I mean, that's what, anyway, I just think that we should be thinking about, about what's beyond gas because, um, there's a lot of places, New York City is now banning uh, hook, new hookups of gas to, to buildings. And I think that that's, you know, we, we've got to start thinking in the future more, hopefully. There won't be one. That's my comment.
Anybody have anything else on that item? Next.
Golf course?
A lot of these are no, next one I see is golf course facilities maintenance building.
Yeah, these are, um, funds for, uh, two project at the maintenance building, which is, uh, located off Plant Street. Uh, one is that, that building itself is an old Butler steel frame steel skin building that's just in terrible shape. It's got leaks all over it in the roof, the windows. So we um, requesting funds to, you know, basically redo the whole exterior envelope of that building. Um, and then the second project out there is, um, you, you know, there's always been this, uh, need or desire and maybe Mark can touch on this a little bit more to have a, a public restroom building at that part of the course. Um, so we're looking at, uh, just putting in a, a, a small, uh, separate building. We looked at an addition, but it was more cost effective to actually just put a small separate building uh, fairly close to that maintenance facility so that we can, you know, run the utilities uh, from the maintenance facility out to this small restroom building.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody have any concerns or questions on?
When you say just a public restroom, but it's really geared for the golfers.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's our media, the public golfers, not for people off the street, right?
Right. Thank you.
Okay, next. A lot of stuff, so, sure. Hey, then we have the golf on page fifty-two, the clubhouse on the golf course.
Yeah, uh, just a couple of smaller projects this year. Um, one is to provide some landscaping um, along the front of the clubhouse building, which faces the course. Um, a number of years ago, we took out the landscape out of there because it was built up against the side of the building and it was causing some water damage. So we need to come up with a plan and, and kind of make that area look a lot nicer. Right now it's just all crushed stone. It doesn't look very attractive on the core side of the building. Um, and then the second project is, um, around the pro shop, we have these, uh, rubber floor tiles, um, for the golfers to walk on with their spikes. And those things that just deteriorate where they need to be replaced. I've been in there like thirty years or so.
Wow. Any questions or concerns on this item? The next one I see is, uh, police.
Uh, to the police, we've got more. You know, we've got, uh, a few projects here. Uh, the first is to, uh, renovate them, the police, the male locker room in the police station. It's original to the building from nineteen seventy-nine. Um, you know, the lock rooms are, are the locks themselves are just too small and the ventilation is just very poor in that area. Um, the second is, uh, for materials for public works to repave the front parking lot that it's really busted up. We've done, you know, the rear parking lot and the driveways, but it's just, uh, the front visitor parking area, uh, needs to be replaced. And then the, the last one again is, um, the same thing as at the library that the oil tank is, you know, thirty years old. So that would look to remove that and, and look at, you know, potentially putting in, uh, gas boilers.
Does anyone have any concerns or questions on this item? And we got, uh, town hall annex building. On page fifty-five.
Yeah, this is just, uh, funds for design for, um, upgrading the HVAC system in the office area. Um, we have money to do some construction. In fact, we have a contract now for, to replace the HVAC system in the community meeting rooms because there's always been some complaints about humidity out there. Uh, so addressing that, but then we also have, uh, I, I get constant complaints from some of the employees in the back when it's really hot. They just don't get enough cooling. So we're just looking at doing, uh, an upgrade to the system.
Anybody have any questions on that item? All right. So why don't we go back to pick up parks and wrecks right now? Which begins on page twenty-six. You have the first item is facilities improvements. If you want to go over these marks.
Mark, you're muted.
All right. Thanks, Deb. Um, so yeah, Sutton Park, the has been disinvested in, uh, there has not been a whole lot of money spent, uh, in that park for a number of years. Um, and it, it's showing its age and showing, um, you know, the fact that we haven't made any improvements in there. Um, there's a number of things that need to be done. The playground needs to be replaced. Uh, we've taken pieces off and put up cart or plywood because we, it, it's so old that we can't get replacement parts for anymore. We're having to weld um, steps back because they're, you know, rusted and the, the joints have, uh, deteriorated to the part where they fall apart. Um, but we are going, or we did get some money, uh, last year, uh, to install a bathroom. There hasn't been a bathroom in that park for, I think at least nineteen years. The pavilions get rented, uh, on a weekly basis and one of the pavilions is in really poor shape. It needs a new roof. Uh, and it needs some other work. Uh, the parking lot i- is coming apart and we need to redo the parking lot. Uh, and over the years, we've been incrementally making improvements to the skate park. Uh, when it was originally built, it was an asphalt park and we've been changing that over to a concrete park and, um, more work needs to be done. Uh, we're trying to finish that project out. Um, and a- as the community park, I, I think it's time that we made a, a, a serious investment in that park. Uh, the other request we had was to widen the walking path, uh, at the Quantic Plains, which is across the street. Uh, we have seen a, a substantial increase in use, uh, particularly during COVID. Um, you know, people wanted to get out and, and do something. And so they turned to that park and we've seen, like I said, a, a substantial increase in the number of users. We would like to extend that availability uh, by, uh, widening the walking path and then also installing, uh, like path, solar path lighting, uh, not big parking lot lights, but, uh, you know, twelve to fourteen feet high that would shine down on the park, on the path to allow uh, people to u- use the park, um, u- use that walking path uh, later, uh, into the evening, uh, yeah, just to expand the availability of being able to use that path.
Anyone have any questions or comments on this item? The next.
The idea of using the solar, the solar lights strictly because wiring, putting a wire loop all the way around, which is too, too, too costly?
No, uh, you know, we feel that, uh, you know, the department's committed to, uh, looking at e- energy conservation and, uh, using solar lights, I, I think is, uh, is, is a good move.
Yeah, well, the only downside of the solar lights and why, why I even question it at all is that the storage end of it, they, each light has its own battery and the batteries end up, since they discharge every night, have a very limited, very limited lifespan. The lights last forever. The batteries last for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So you, and it ends up being kind of almost a false economy unless it's just too tough to get the wiring in. In which case, you know, you're better off connecting to the grid and putting up a bunch of solar panels or putting solar panels on each one of the lights and then wiring it to the grid. So the grid becomes the storage. So that's, that's mainly down, the downside. It's kind of low hanging fruit saying, hey, I put these solar lights on. But if that means however many lights you have, that many batteries you have, that you're, you are going to be replacing them every couple of years? Not such a great idea. So I think that one should be kind of examined holistically and not just, yes, for now it sounds great to put up the solar panel lights. I'm always up for solar panels, but for batteries uh, that discharge every day, not quite so sure.
Do they make some of the commercial uses that last longer? How? Because I have some that have lasted a long time.
How, how long?
I don't know, five, ten years.
I've never seen one last ten years. So may, maybe, maybe they're doing better now. I generally seen them last for a few.
Yeah, no, I've got some that have lasted quite a while. Told a snowplow wiped that one out a couple of weeks ago. It was expensive to replace it, two hundred, over two hundred dollars to replace. But they do last, I don't know, the batteries seem to be pretty powerful. Any other questions on this item? Okay. Next one is page twenty-seven, community connectivity program.
Yes, in two thousand and four, uh, we did a bike and pedestrian master plan and we're proposing to update that. Uh, in twenty twenty, we conducted a recreational needs assessment. This is a statistically valid, so it reflects the interest of the community. And, uh, I think the second highest scoring project, uh, or interest in the community was more connectivity. And, uh, we feel that it's, we're. And we feel that it's, we're looking at a, a study that was done over fifteen years ago and it's time to update that study.
So that's all it's looking for is just a study. Any questions or concerns on that? Page twenty eight golf course improvement plan.
So we've got three proposed projects. One is to continue to make renovations to the golf course. Over the course of time, the greenside bunkers get deeper and deeper. And we've started this project and have a number of bunkers throughout the course that we have already modified. We're proposing to continue to do that. And this, these changes came out of a recommendation from the National Golf Foundation. The second project is actually having the National Golf Foundation come back and do a new study or necessarily the National Golf Foundation, but having somebody come back and do an analysis of the golf course. The previous study was conducted in two thousand and four. Golf industry has changed quite a bit. You know, we're enjoying a bump in play from COVID, but I don't know, you know, how long that's, that's going to last. And I think we, we need this study in order to put ourselves, make sure that we put ourselves in a position where we can continue to operate successfully. And the third project is to replace the chain link fence along Eastern Point Road and fencing around the tunnel. Over the course of time, the fence has deteriorated both around the tunnel and also along Eastern Point Road.
Anyone have any concerns or questions on this item? On page twenty nine, park investment ADA compliance.
We are, have proposed to replace the playground equipment at Farquhar Park, including installing an ADA compliant walkway from the parking lot to the playground. And this playground is twenty five years old. Again, we can't get parts for it. We've taken pieces off and had to put up plywood. And this was one of the parts that was recommended or identified in the two thousand and thirteen accessibility study to make some improvements to, to make this park accessible. The other project, again, this deals with accessibility is funds to develop plans to make a concession, concession and bathroom building at Calvin Burrows ADA compliant.
Any questions or concerns on that item? Page twenty three. Page thirty one Recreation Master Plan.
Yeah, the last master plan that was done was two thousand and nine. And we're proposing to update that recreational master plan. We do have the benefit of already having the recreational needs assessment, which is typically a part of a master plan. We did that in two thousand and twenty as part of the, at the time, the Mystic Oral School Project. The town appropriated money to, to do a recreational needs assessment. So we have that component already. So this is just to kind of fill out the rest of the, the master plan, which would include like a level of service analysis, recommendation, staffing recommendations, operational recommendations.
Any questions or concerns on that item? It for that section. The next section I see is on.
Thank you, Mark.
Information Technology. That's on page fifty eight.
Right, Brian Hancock is here from Information Technology Department.
Good evening. This is an ongoing project as, as you would think. Data center infrastructure improvements is the ongoing upgrading of server hardware, software, operating system upgrades to keep current. We're also looking to replace our on-prem backup system, which went end of life this year. We do have online backup, but it's, it's good to always have an on-prem backup because we back up different things and it's always good to have tapes on hand. We're also looking to upgrade our web security and performing an IT security assessment to see where any weaknesses that we have within our, our data center and our multi-levels of security that we have out there.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns on this item?
Were there any other items within IT?
This is pretty much my only item.
Oh, that's good. Brian, what percentage of your, of your IT budget is within the cloud right now?
Cost wise?
A percentage wise?
We do backups of all our application systems online today, every night, full backups. We also do them on tape, too. This is in correlation. It's always good to have, like I said, two backups, one on hand and one in the cloud. You never know what happens with your connections.
So the percentage of dollars being spent on cloud versus on premise is, is what is that percentage?
Well, cloud, we've been spending probably ten to twelve, twelve thousand a year.
Yeah.
And on-prem, besides the initial cost, it's probably one to two thousand a year.
So not much.
Not much, no. For the, for the, for the security that we get from it, it's a wealth, well, investment.
I agree, I agree. You know, there's these data centers with host fee agreements going on in the town right now, right?
Correct.
So here's my suggestion, which we should send back to the town manager, the town council. The host fee agreement is essentially in lieu of taxes. Some towns go eighty six and a half percent. Connecticut seems to go the route of somewhere between a half million and fifteen, one point five. Now, the developers had said, although they've never built one, they're, they're basically saying that they're going to be there through the construction. I, I would ask that we go back to the town manager and or town council and say, okay, that's great. You're building in our town. We'd like anywhere between two hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars per year in order to be able to also utilize the sites which you are building and staying with us per what they've said so far. So that's my recommendation. Go back. In addition to the host fee agreement is that we ask for up to five hundred thousand dollars from any developer who's looking for a host fee agreement in the town.
Well, we're, we're just, we're not looking at the financials.
Oh, I'm just looking at the structure. That's my structure.
I know that, but tonight we're just going over the CIP. That's all on the agenda.
And my point is, instead of spending this on, on premise is let's, let's spend it within the cloud potentially with what's gone going as far as projects are concerned. So I don't, we don't have to put a half million dollars on it then, but the answer is, I believe these type of costs should go to the cloud. And we have with a host fee agreement, the ability for these cloud people to be able to handle the town's IT needs. That's my issue.
That's if they ever build it.
Yes.
That's all.
Can we get back to the CIP?
It is the CIP.
No, it is not.
Kevin, I think you should go and look at the, the town council is voting on it tonight, I think.
You should, yeah, you should go speak to the town council directly.
Okay, I withdraw my comments. Thank you, Jeff.
I don't think it's on the agenda tonight, but Kevin, I do think the town manager would be very interested in your suggestions.
Thank you.
Let's get back to the CIP page. The next item we have is on page sixty three squad car body cams. Technology.
That pretty much speaks for itself. The police department is looking to get twenty one in-car cameras installed in all their squad guys up there. I think that's what some of this money is being used for.
Does anyone have any questions on this item, concerns? Next one is page sixty four, Town Meeting Room AV Presentation Equipment Replacement Upgrade.
This, this is Sean Greeley. This is an ongoing project that he has, he has going. He's been doing CR one, two, and three, and it looks like he's moving on to some other conference rooms, being the town manager, IT and the finance conference room upgrades.
So anyone have any questions, concerns on this item? Next item is GIS. It's Police Speed Dispatch Display Devices on page sixty seven.
I really have no idea what they are. Probably.
Just hardware. Yeah, that's what it sounds like. Anybody have any concerns on that item? Let's put up flashing lights and how fast we're going. And that's it for IT.
Thank you, Brian.
Hey, thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, the next area is economic assistance, funding, planning and economic development.
Yeah. The replenishment of the Economic Assistance Fund.
Okay, that's just an ongoing thing. Does anyone have any questions on that? Open space acquisition, that's another ongoing plan. Any questions or concerns? Eight-way finding sign project.
This is the next phase of the wayfinding program that we have. The signs have been designed and you're starting to see them going up through town. I think there's a number of them that are stored in the parks maintenance building that'll be going up soon. And this is just the next phase.
Okay, any questions, concerns on that?
Have we seen these signs?
Um.
Are we gonna be surprised?
I, I can send you, I can send the, the document to you if you're interested, Hal.
Yeah, I'm interested.
Okay.
Next one is downtown Mystic Parking Management.
This is the implementation. It's of the parking management study that we conducted last year jointly with Stonington.
Okay, just to implement. Are they going to have meters on the, on the main street now?
The, the council has not yet decided that. But that is what this funding would do if indeed the council decides to that route.
You know, it was never meters on the street.
It wasn't meters, it was.
It was metering.
Right.
Kiosks, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and app, mostly an app.
The big problem with Main Street is every time you park there, it blocks up traffic.
Oh, that's the charm.
That's the charm. All right, any comments, question, concerns on that item? Next one is Mystic Coastal Access Trail and Signage Program.
Yep. Yeah, this funding will cover some public outreach. A number of the signs are on private property where we do have easements for signage. But we want to coordinate with property owners before these signs are installed.
Okay, this is to get new signs.
Right, for the, the Mystic, what's called now the Mystic River Trail.
Right. Any questions on that item?
I'm just wondering, because in two thousand and twenty four, there's installation of kiosks. What are we talking about?
So the kiosks are actually a map, you know, showing where the trail is and points of interest along it. They're the ones that are, have been proposed are pretty pricey items.
And where would these go?
Um, one, I believe is at He Quod Alley. Another one is off of Water Street and I don't remember the exact location.
Any other comments on that item? Okay, now we move back to Public Works Water Pollution Control Facility. Page seventy eight Pump Stations.
I, yeah, we got two pump stations we're looking at. One is, we're completing the design now for the upgrade and replacement of pumps, motor controllers, electrical system at the Mufford Cove Pump Station, which is one of our major stations. It still has all the original equipment in it, so it's certainly overdue for replacement. And the second is the, it's a small pump stations in Burgess Park. It's what they call a can style, which is just like a steel cylinder that was put in the ground and it's actually starting to rot out at the bottom and it's becoming a safety issues for, you know, my guys to even go into this thing to, to work on it. So we're going to be doing the design work to replace that pump station.
That's. Okay, any questions on that item? That's all boring by users.
That's, yeah, that's the sort of user fees pay for all this stuff.
Okay, page seventy nine Treatment Facility.
This is to replace the service A generator at the treatment plant. We actually have two electrical services that come in in parallel, A and B. So we can run half the plant if we have to. Right now, the service A generator, which is the original nineteen seventies generator. It's been out of service for a couple of years now. We thought we could repair it last year. We have tried a number of different things to repair it, brought in a number of different specialists and then nobody can seem to do it. So we're just gonna bite the bullet and just pay the price to replace it.
Can't go without the emergency generator.
No.
Any questions? I don't want to play around with that. Any questions or comments on that? Last item for fiscal year twenty twenty three. So I'd like to go over what we see as overall issues on our report. We wanted to report on infill sidewalk construction to prioritize the sidewalk infill. If you wanted to say, anybody thought we should say anything else in that?
Prioritize not just this fiscal year, but for outgoing.
Right.
And we had page thirty six. You see, this item is a field upgrade. field upgrade. Should, we should indicate that should be depend, dependent on possible, or possible what was it, replacement of the of the field? Page forty. Page forty, we thought that somebody should look at, or the town should look at integrating this program with one at Grasso Tech. Or the feasibility of doing that. We had on the Gotten Community Center. The need, we should identify the need for plan to develop use of the community center. Those are the items I saw. Does anyone have other items that we, they think we should report on?
The key word there for the community center was the whole community center.
Or the whole, yeah. Yes, the whole, the entire community. A plan should be developed for use of the entire facility. Eventually, there's a lot that could be done there, I think. If they wanted a community playhouse or something, you've got an auditorium, that ought to be looked at for development. Or putting in a swimming pool, if that's what people want, might be a good location.
Well, attaching a swimming pool building, so yeah.
Building, oh yeah, but I mean, it's part of that facility.
Oh, sure.
The developer.
That's the place to go.
That would be a true community center. Does anyone have anything else on this issue? Okay.
You could call it thrive rotten.
I don't wanna even talk about that.
All right.
No, there's some, there's something that's missing with that report. I don't understand who made the decision or how it gets done, and it's irreversible. In five years, they'll be putting up a new sign.
Because branding goes, right? Well, that's how branding goes, and someone comes up with a new idea, and they rebrand it again, right?
That's why you have electrical signs.
So if they rebrand the inside and try out the programs, we're all in support of it, right? If it works, that's great. But for the moment, I don't see the value of the signage, and I think we stated that.
Okay. Next item on the, on the agenda, commission reports, report of chair.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Greg.
Report of Chair on the email we had from Bill Grant. And looking at what are what's allowed to be put in our zones for industrial areas. There's nothing that talks about data processing centers. Which if we interpret what people were talking about when the zoning regs were reviewed, if it's not there, you can't do it. And I
Right, but the zoning official has made a determination.
That's what I'm concerned with, that nipple dogging, going off and making decisions without the ability to really review them. I don't, that's why I objected to that, but we should be taking some action now to to describe what a data center is and whether we can put it in or not, because some of these things are huge. You know, and our, the way we describe industrial areas isn't, it's very difficult to see what's allowable and what isn't allowable. You know, as far as size goes.
This is a complex question too, because if this was a giant factory, it would be a different thing with a thousand people showing up. Instead, we've got a giant factory with thirty people showing up. I mean, this is a very strange kind of dynamic, eating more electricity than you know, half the town, or the whole town, or something like that. It's outrageous.
And, and water.
And, not as much water for this one.
I don't, I don't think our zoning regulations were written with this kind of development in mind.
No, they're not. That's what my concern, that's what my
And so, once again, you know, it's, it, we and unfortunately, I don't know why the zoning official makes decisions like this without at least like, I don't know, I mean, it's the same thing with the short-term rentals I see. We, we got ourselves into a mess.
No, that's, that's what my concern is. It's exactly
And, and these kinds of things are pretty clear to me, but maybe I'm missing something.
Well, it should, at least it should explain it, have it limited by size, you know, how many square footer footage is is being developed.
I don't know if it's, because it could be sized, it could be impact. For us, it's impact.
Impact, but it could be noise impact on this.
Well, it could be, and that's, so all these things are, I think that's where we're gonna have to come in, is that what's going to be the impact? It's not gonna be the number of cars, that's just not gonna be it. Once every three years or so, there'll be a whole bunch of cars, and then it'll go away, because they do upgrade. So if they, this thing, we just heard why we wanted to put in solar lights onto a field. Because that's a thing we can do. And here we have the most spectacular energy consumption thing, which sounds fine to me if you're already also going to produce some of it, and they're gonna produce none. So that's, that's an impact to us.
But it's, what's allowed is in the IM zone, I think should be restricted somewhat to size. It's so limited as to light industry. What's light industry?
For me, if it were, if it were sized, and they came and said, we're just gonna have this sprawling factory, and what we're gonna do is make sales in them. And so it'll be, has to be absolutely monstrous, and there's gonna be thirty people working on it. I don't know if I'd have a problem with it.
No, but it
It's be a sale off, who cares?
No, but it's the size of a building.
But, but why would I care? It's up in the woods, and it doesn't, it's using a fraction of the total site, and has all these qualities that we would kind of like, and even leaves most of it open for other use. These are things we like. So this is a unique kind of piece.
No, it is. Yeah, it is. And we don't have it defined, and that's why I think we should not allow things that aren't defined, until we can look at them and say what's really required. But we must look at pictures of this thing, and there are hu, some of these areas are huge.
Yeah, so if I can just make a comparison. Oh, if I can just make a comparison. So I work in, no one, very few people in the world have been in hyperscale data centers, right? Because you can't get in, they do not allow you to get into these, whether it's Google, I went into the Microsoft ones, right? So if you look at Boynton, Virginia, which is a tier four, similar to this, which needs complete redundancy, that's what a tier four essentially means, means you need two separate feeds of just about everything that you do, particularly power, right? Boytown, Virginia started at three hundred thousand square feet, and they're on their fourth upgrade at one point two million square feet, right? You, you cannot envision how fast these tier fours grow, right? And so it's, it's really different. Everything that you said, we have comparisons in the United States would have happened to tier fours. And because we don't have the regulation around that, yet we have the knowledge of how these things grow, I find it irresponsible, then a zoning official would grant something like that without some of this knowledge, in that we do need to seek a definition prior to anything like this being put into town. That's my feeling.
That's what I think we should
What should we do?
Well, should we
Well, we have the flexibility, we have the flexibility to put some requirements on this, I take it, because it's not defined, therefore, it's allowed, but we have the flexibility to put requirements on it. And those requirements should, can be, well, yes, you can do it, except that, oh, by the way, producer own, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of harping on producer own power thing. But it could be also, acoustics must be what the ambient rate is, not what the average ambient rate is, what the lowest one is, and make all these kind of really difficult things, including including, this is what the size is. And it can't be expanded. We'll approve this, but it can't be expanded, because this, this is one of the requirements. I mean, Kevin already suggested, you know, having an extra five hundred grand for, for, for services for our own backups. Good idea, but that's kind of a pure financial thing for us, it's gonna be the physical things. And maybe we can, you know, narrow it down, say, hey, here's all the things we hate about it. Uh, so like what they kind of try to force us into with the oral school, but in this case, we'd say, no, this is what would make it okay. We don't wanna see it, we don't wanna hear it, we don't wanna smell it, we don't wanna power it.
Then it can't be there. So, so I mean, you can do what the zoning regulations are gonna allow you to do. You can certainly address noise. You, you can't you can't tell them you can't get any bigger than X if the regulations allow a certain amount of coverage on a lot. I mean, those are things, if, if indeed the town council decides to enter into this host agreement, that's the sort of stuff that should be in there, things that, that the town can't control just through zoning. Right. I guess one thing, if you remember the Whittles, when they were in there about the noise issues. What the state regulates and what's acceptable to the neighbors are really two different things. So that's, that becomes, you're really changing somebody's neighborhood. And I mean, it's all, I mean, the state has the regulations, they do. Certain numbers are acceptable, but it turns out if that's fix your house, even if it's far away like Whittles was, it's noisy, you know? So I think these things have so many problems, and it's hard, it's hard to deal with it when you really don't have a plan at this point at all.
Right.
You know, either, so.
And I, I have a hard time understanding how the zoning official un, understands these things without I mean, it's not in our regulations. So I don't know how it, how it's allowed.
The, the regulations, though, you have to really look, they do have certain parameters. I mean, how close could they go to the street with this thing?
Oh, no, but they don't, they describe certain types of businesses. But this is not one that's described.
That's right, no, that's right. But he has the ability to make that determination. We, you know, it's impossible to list every sort of use in the zoning regulations. So it does allow him the flexibility to determine that you know, X use is very, very similar to Y, unless it's going to be allowed just like X is.
But does he have the, the knowledge to know what a data center is? And what its impact is on the community or the environment?
He, he, he is only looking at, is it allowed? Is it an allowed use?
Yes, but it isn't allowed. It's not identified, so then it's not allowed.
But he has the ability to interpret this.
I would question horses training to do that.
He's been a zoning official for a very long time.
That's not enough training. He has to have a lot more training.
And, you know. It seems as if there's other issues that are, need to be defined as well.
Right.
Troubling to me.
Well, maybe, maybe we can fall back on the idea that the reason it was permitted was because it was assumed to be the same as these other things that are permitted. That's with the justification. He said, the zoning official said, this looks just like these things that are permitted, therefore, it's okay. So our parameters for approval should be how much like these things that are permitted is it? Are they expected to run twenty-four seven and have a thirty thousand hertz sound at seventy
DB?
Seventy DB, twenty-four hours a day. And the answer is no. We're not expecting that out of these things that are permitted. So that's something they would have to take care of. Now, they can. I have great faith in acoustic engineers, if that's what their task is. If their target is, on the average, it's okay, then that's a bad target. So we just, I think we just have to figure out what it is that's permitted. If they say, well, this is permitted, well, it's permitted because these are, these are the effects we expected it to have on the community. So therefore, you must make this thing have these effects on the community, and no more than that. Traffic, they will have that. They'll have less traffic than we would have allowed. I'm not even sure what else, in terms of the construction that they would do. I don't think we'd have a problem with it. They're going to decide to tilt up concrete. I don't know where they're finding a tilt-up concrete contractor in Connecticut, but good luck. But I guess that's what they're doing. California, they're doing them all the time. I, I've done twenty, I've never seen one here, so I guess that's a new thing here, doing tilt-up concrete.
I think the thing is, Hal, is that when, when you look at this area, if if they're talking about a three hundred square foot, you know, I don't know how big this building's supposed to be, six acres or something like that. I think it's the mass of the building and how much area it's gonna cover. When you're talking about putting a Crystal Mall up there, or is it, you know, I don't know what, different impacts. But it isn't defined in our regulations as far as I can.
No.
But Just be the start of a tier four, Michael. So the answer is, you know, it's, would just be the start. But what Hal says, I'll tell you, because I've just been in these, we, we, we look at the design, the design of them, how we put our processing power. Noise is never a problem. I swear to God, noise is never a problem. When, maybe when you're inside, but I've never heard the problem outside. I'll just say, I've never heard that, but it's all about power and water. If it's a tier four, what did I do, thirty-two terawatts or whatever, that takes one point two million gallons a year of water, which maybe we have in a reservoir, right? But that's what it takes. It's, it's massive cooling as well as that. But, but they, what the guy making the proposal was, and as part of my report, was that Michael, mine, I don't know who else, went to their, demonstrate to their presentation, was he won't be using water cooling, which I think is actually a problem. But he's not using water cooling, so the, the water use will be for washing their hands and flushing toilets. They're going to be use air source cooling, using regular air conditioners. Could be a problem. That's gotta be a tremendous, so that's that much more electricity that they're not making, and they're just blowing the heat off on the roof. They don't need to heat it, I don't think. Is that what you found, Kevin? Do you ever need, ever need to heat these things? Oh, right. Typically, there's so much heat being generated by these, but you have cool aisles and you have hot aisles. So it's very efficient on the inside, and essentially, you could regulate the heat based on what comes out of the back of servers. It's very, it's very interesting, right? Yeah. But I've gotta look that up, so I don't know. You know, we're putting, we tried these things at the bottom of oceans and stuff, just to be able to cool them. So I don't understand that, but I'll look into that. That's, it's a good point. I didn't see that part of the presentation. I saw some of the other things, but I think we're getting down to if this comes to us, you know, what are some of the criteria we should be judging it on? Or by, based on what the zoning official said, which we do not agree, apparently, I don't. Then, wha, what are our parameters to make a decision? That's, I think, what we're talking about, right?
Do we need to have a zoning reg change to identify these?
We don't have, we don't have an application, same old story.
No, 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 not to say what our concerns are, what it has to be met.
I don't know what the concerns are until I know what the guy wants to do. I, I really don't know. If he's gonna blast, it'd be, I don't think it's gonna be six acres.
They have to level off a huge site that's not level, so there'll be some blasting next to the highway. It's, it's way up against the highway in the site. They've done more blasting in places that we haven't noticed, so that could be one, but that's one of those normal construction things that I think we get around. But we do have to figure out.
I mean, the state, then, sorry. Yeah, the state does own a lot of that land next to the highway, and I presume, I mean, you really have to buy the towns or do the swap of the town.
They wanted it next to the highway for the two reasons. One was, that's where the cable is, that's where they get power through. So it kind of took care of both those things for them, and it was also, they figured it was noisy.
No, I understand, but there's like so close they can get, unless the state's gonna give up their land too.
Maybe we should put this at the top of our doodle poll list.
Oh, that's right. I will find out the, the results of our quiz. Oh, that's right. I will find out the, the results of our quiz.
Well. I think we should maybe continue the con, put it on the agenda for next time, see what we want to do with something like this, or do we have to? Put some limits on new, new application or things that aren't really identified in the zoning regs, if new ones come in, how we handle it.
Well, certainly, our, our zoning regs are, you know, I feel like we're always playing catch up. And the world is changing and, you know.
Oh, it's hard, yeah, it's hard to keep up with.
Totally always is with, with new uses and zoning regulations.
But the zoning regs happen to be some of the newest ones you'll find around here. But, yeah, they can't contemplate everything.
I'm not criticizing.
No, no.
I think that people thought if it's not identified, you can't do it and then somebody else.
I don't think that's true. We see how far we can get with it, right?
Because. Can I make a suggestion? I'm, I'm sure, I'm not sure, you know, which direction goes, but we made a decision based on a cannabis law. That was passed in the state of Connecticut that we would put a moratorium on cannabis. Buildings or sites, right? Until, until the town reflected, gave us the feedback as far as whether they wanted to have that cannabis in town or not. We did that, right? So the state now passes a data center bill. That basically allows a lot more things in our, in the town, allows for new developers to come to town. Why don't we, as a group, vote as a moratorium until we know what the impact is that upon our communities? Let's put a moratorium on what we consider data centers.
One thing might be a problem, it's, it's probably not a good idea or would have been a good idea. Except that on this one, the town council is already all in.
Well, the world restaurant.
We are separate from the town council, certainly.
I know that, except that with the cannabis, we're, we're comparing to cannabis, town council's always thinking, okay, give us, give it some time, no problem there. In this case, town council's already seeing. A million and a half compared to, you know, how much taxes are you getting from that property now for, for last twenty years? Pittance. And they'd see that this will work for us.
Al, I don't think that that can be our concern.
It's not our concern, but it's a reality of how much support we'll get to be able to do a.
Well, I, moratorium doesn't mean that it's not gonna happen, it just allows us to update our zoning regulations, which don't address this. Issue now.
Yeah.
And haven't been considered in our zoning regulations.
They, they might. They might address it more than you think, but we do need to look at it, but I don't know.
I think that, you know, given that we have a doodle poll out there with a lot of things that are really important. You know, maybe we just need to. Put things on the back burner until they can be addressed and maybe this will make. Make things move a little faster.
No, it's not a zoning thing. But it's a town resolution that was in this letter that we just got, which is kind of a pretty good point. Which was that, that they put the town council passed the resolution, I don't know if you all know, since you already know that thing. Of a commitment to address climate change, resiliency, sustainability as a central management principle for all actions of the town government. And it goes to lowering our carbon footprint. And resolved that the town council will consider these guiding principles that they. This is a, something we should be doing with everything we do in the government. Now frankly, had this. Guy come up with this multi acre building and had a rooftop full of solar panels and a wind turbine on top. I probably would have to say, well, you, you gave it a shot, thank you very much. It's some fraction of what you need to do. But maybe it's one of those things that we can say, this is our resolution. It's not on our plan of conservation and development, but it's also a town resolution. Do we ignore one over the other? I, I'd say we can, that's one we can kind of push. If it's egregious to them, well, too bad. That's not our job to be nice to you for your business. Our job is to. Follow the regulations we have.
Oh, and to, and to support the community.
And support community. Not necessarily support the neighbors, so that's.
Yeah, no doubt. No, yeah, that's it.
That's for the community.
That's what I, that's what I. Know, keeps us all civilized at some level, you know? And I think we saw it. With the last big project where people start to get really, you know. Upset when they see their town moving in a direction they don't want it to move in, or their neighborhood moving in a direction that they don't want it to move in. That, that, that to me is what zoning is all about. But maybe I'm, I don't know what.
I just don't want to have everyone showing up with the pitchforks and torches.
Well, that's it.
Does it look like they were going to do for that?
Oh, very true. Data centers could be good, but you know, part of, part of our decision on Mystic Oral School was as well. Because I remember people like Sue cited this, I certainly cited it, was that the conservation plan of the town. Basically designated that, that land is not as, you know, industrial nine hundred apartment use. It, it was very clear. And we, we're also have clarity on this, that basically the town has said the impact on, on, on our carbon footprint has now become pronounced. So are we following the same parallels, including the cannabis thing? And the answer is, could be argued either way, in my opinion. But I think that's a very, not a radical, it's not a pitchfork, but it raises the specter is, maybe that's the responsible thing to do. As a planning and zoning board.
Oh. I think we should be thinking about it. Can we put this on the agenda for discussion next time to, to see what we want to do with this?
Yeah, I was planning on having a discussion about zoning regulations at the next meeting.
Oh, all right, okay.
Just, because frankly, you guys were all over the place. Yeah, exactly, but, but I think I've asked the town attorney to come next time to talk about regulating short term rentals and what the implications are of that and what we can do. And then go through, you know. Think we kind of have a plan of what we're gonna tackle first, so we'll go over that as well.
All right.
Okay, do we need to have a special meeting? Or would that be helpful? I mean, with, with the Zoom, it's easy enough for me.
I mean, I've got the town attorney scheduled for the next meeting. I don't know.
Okay.
To talk about zoning regulations and, and I'm not sure we're going to have any site plans that are ready, so it just. Made sense to put it on that one.
If he's already scheduled, yeah, why don't we hold it, because.
And then can we further this discussion?
Oh, yeah, because this is also zoning.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted. I don't want, I, I know how things sometimes fall off the radar.
Yep, we'll include this.
I think we should, yes. Because there may be other things that come up in the future, some with no things like this. How we handle them. All right, that's all I, I had. I think that's enough. Ruining everybody's evening. Reporter commission, does anyone on the commission have anything to report on? Reporter staff, do you have anything else to add?
I don't.
Then having the attorney for our next meeting. Any application update as ASP report? No one has anything else to add or discuss, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Dagan.
Would the second. And I found that, that you can sort of smooth something up for our report.
Oh, yeah, yep.
If you need, if you need any help on that, give me a call.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Kevin. Good night, everyone.